Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Northampton on December 4th, 2008. As is the usual practice, we'll have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Anybody who'd like to speak, I'll call the names of those who've signed up. And welcome to speak for up to three minutes, per the council rules. First, and if I don't get your last name right, feel free to correct me too. Or your first name, for that matter. Patrice Webel.
You may not be able to read this sign from where you are. So let me read it to you. It's a quote from Ansel Adams, and it says, "It is horrifying that we have to fight our own government to save our environment. The city of Northampton appears to continue to seek to expand a landfill over the Barnes-Aquifer and within the Zone 2 water supply protection area for East Hampton. The people who live in the vicinity of the landfill have suffered from cancers and leukemia and skin diseases and other ailments at rates higher and much higher than expected levels. The residents who live in the vicinity of the landfill breathe in daily noxious odors caused by the toxic stew at the landfill. What the city of Northampton is doing is making some residents become a sacrifice zone, so that the city can continue to operate a regional landfill, making every effort to bring in at least 50,000 tons a year of garbage and toxic waste. And, of course, it's a disincentive to reduce waste. City councilors don't sacrifice the lives and the health of some city residents and the water resource for 60,000 Western Bay staters. Start now to implement a zero-waste plan."
Thank you. Lauren Halman. And I will ask where you go if you could just state your name and address, because this is the official record of this.
Sure. My name is Lauren Halman. I live at 14 Western Avenue. I'm going to speak on ordinance 28553 tonight, and I just wanted to say that two months ago, I met with Mayor Higgins and Terry Anderson to discuss this ordinance and figure out why exactly it existed in the first place. And I gathered three main points from what we talked about. The first point was that downtown is congested. They claim that the sidewalks downtown are really narrow, and the panhandlers are regularly obstructing traffic down there. And because of this, you claim that you just want to regulate where panhandlers can panhandle to maximize space in the downtown. You stated that the same thing was done for sandwich boards and for artist tables, but these are inanimate objects, which, so I don't think it's that important. Having spoken to many people who have lived in Northampton, and I've only lived in Northampton for a year, but I've gotten to know the downtown pretty well, and it seems that there are no real issues with sidewalk obstruction in downtown concerning panhandlers specifically. I've actually never had any trouble walking downtown concerning any physical obstructions. I don't want to see a study that shows that there's any true obstruction happening, because any true physical obstruction. And I want to stress physical obstruction, because I feel like the main obstruction that's talked about more and more with this ordinance is emotional and comfort obstruction that's happening with certain people in this community. The second point was that there's been an immense increase in the number of calls received by citizens stating that they're being harassed by panhandlers. And so this ordinance was brought forth to start a conversation, but we saw at the Public Safety Committee meeting that Chief Sinkewitz has no real way of putting forth any verifiable data that can show that people are being harassed by panhandlers any more than anyone else. The third point raised in the meeting, and we also saw this in the Public Safety Committee meeting, is that the Council on Aging states that people that are the elderly in this community rarely go downtown because they fear being intimidated or fear being harassed. We must recognize, however, that for each of these arguments, the focus is around a feeling of comfort. Mayor Higgins even said that people should be able to have an area to walk downtown where they know they aren't going to be bothered, and that's something that you said in the meeting. This basically means that they should make spaces where people can't be if they might be bothering people that are shopping downtown. So we certainly don't want businesses struggling any more than the economy forces them to. And if something is keeping people from being able to shop at various stores downtown, it should certainly be dealt with. But granted, we are in economic times, and everyone is feeling it. But to pass this ordinance, we would have to believe two things. First, that the idea is that one of the main reasons that businesses aren't flourishing is specifically related to panhandlers downtown that are making people so uncomfortable that they won't enter stores. And then, to deal with that problem, if we believed it, that we would be telling panhandlers to go away because they're making people uncomfortable. What's to prevent us from sectioning off any other marginalized group that makes people uncomfortable that want to shop downtown? Our country is meant to be a democracy where one concern of any person is heard and listened to, and addressed in the most just way possible. And to many, this ordinance may seem like it's doing just that. But in reality, it's allowing a certain sector of society, one that downtown businesses rely on, to dictate the freedom of others based on their comfort level. If we're to learn to be members of a democracy, we should not be teaching our community members that if they have the money to keep downtown businesses going, that they can tell anyone what to say, where to be, and how to be there. Those who cannot stand seeing and interacting with the realities of desperate poverty firsthand when they decide to shop downtown, out of fear and by way of their privilege, they're attempting to make themselves more comfortable by further excluding the poor from Northampton, and we won't stand for it.
Thank you. Gene Tacy.
Gene Tacy, North Maple Street, Florence. Pretty tough to park tonight, so I guess business is pretty busy downtown. I hope they're all buying. Members of the City Council, Mayor, I've been awaiting the recommendations of the Best Practices Committee for a year now, and I understand tonight is the night. I'm hoping that following the rules, public awareness, and participation is a part of it. We all know that the expansion of the landfill is a hot topic, and although you are preaching public involvement, you are also, at the same time, it would seem, trying to bulldog it through in ways that are more than disturbing. On the second Monday of each month at 11:15, appointments and evaluations meets, and this is the tool that we, the public, use to see for ourselves and take part in the shaping of various committees by public comment at the City Council. The notion that a phone interview by a single member of the committee suffices is absurd. When seats are becoming vacant, letters of resignation are submitted, and one would think a seat would be advertised, applications would be submitted, and then forwarded to appointments and evaluations. Then the applicants would show up at the meeting and sell themselves to this council before expecting to be appointed. How is it possible that the suspension of rules for two seats and the circumventing appointments and evaluations and public comment for positions that greatly affect the welfare in the health of this community and future communities, not to mention our neighboring community, could have taken place without cahoots? For the suspension of rules or circumventing procedure and/or policy, such as the last two votes to replace two yes votes on the Board of Public Works for the expansion of the landfill, with two citizens with obvious ties to City Hall, can only be construed as improper or the stacking of the deck for the expansion. And for the mayor and the chair of this committee to lay all blame for this on the council and proclaim her absolute innocence in these shenanigans is shameful. Let us not forget Robert's Rules of Order. Says the chair must remain impartial on all issues, and the editorializing and the advocating by the chair on any issue is strictly prohibited. Should we continue in this direction, I would recommend disbanding appointments and evaluations, as it is not used as it's supposed to be, or replace those on it with members who will take public sentiment seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus Leva.
Hi, members of the City Council. I'd just like to speak in support of the amendment for the establishment of committees, and I hope that you'll pass it on second reading.
Thank you. Lil Fedora.
Hi, I'm Lil Fedora, and I live at 238 Glendale Road. And I want to say I'm against the Northampton landfill, but I also want to say that, you know, Northampton is a very progressive town. They're leaders in our community, and they're leaders in the state, and now they're leaders in environmental pollution. The city has said that everything in the area of the Northampton landfill is fine. However, this is what our city has done to a brook that once had fish in it. There's contaminants in here. I don't want to touch it. I'll tell you, it's disgusting. Dioxanes and arsenic. This is what our city is doing. The DPW and the DEP are assuming that the contamination is from the old, unlined landfill, which is capped. They cannot disprove at this time that the contamination is not from the current lined landfill. However, we met with the DEP two weeks ago. They said no testing has been done to test that assumption. There is nothing green about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Hesinger.
Linda Hesinger, Park Hill Road. The city of Northampton received a precedent-setting waiver from Commissioner Gullidge at the end of the Romney administration to expand the landfill over the Barnes-Aquifer. This waiver will be environmentally detrimental. Northampton may set a second precedent that is in opposition to the environment as well. The ordinance written to expand the landfill will exempt the landfill from a water supply protection area it sits in if the Northampton Board of Public Works and City Council vote in favor of the special permit. From Boston to the Berkshires, landfills are banned from water supply protection areas. There are three other landfills in Western Massachusetts within 20-mile radius of the Northampton landfill: South Hadley, Granby, and Chicopee. There was also an incinerator in Agawam. Waste Management, multi-million dollar corporation, just bought 90 acres in Granby to expand that landfill, which is approximately 15 miles away from Northampton. The Department of Public Works board members have repeatedly said that in order to have a landfill, Northampton has to bring in approximately 50,000 tons of garbage a year. Thus, it is disincentive for Northampton to reduce waste. Waste is not inevitable. We can reduce waste through ordinances and policies. New rules and incentives for the system of waste in Northampton would reduce waste. Expanding the landfill is a financial and environmental risk for Northampton residents. If Northampton puts a small resource recovery park into place, reducing waste, recycling, and composting food waste, it will save money and save the environment. Last week, the Board of Public Works approved $33,000 to assist residents of Northampton in saving Northampton's backup watershed area and the Marble Brook. Northampton needs to show thought for the neighbor's backup watershed area for East Hampton and Southampton, and save the Haddon Brook, too, only two miles away or so. The residents who live in the area of the Northampton landfill have suffered from a social injustice in our own small city of Northampton. This is an embarrassment. It is also an embarrassment that Northampton has polluted precious wetlands that flow into the Haddon Brook. It is a question of integrity to reduce waste, save the environment, protect our water, protect our citizens, and save the aquifer. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Finn.
Yes, hello. My name is Daniel Finn from 1106 North Pleasant Street in Amherst. The news tells us that our country has been in a recession since December of last year. I'm part of an organization called Pioneer Valley Local First. It's one of 65 networks across North America to support local businesses throughout the country, and for Pioneer Valley Local First, specific to the three counties here in the Pioneer Valley. And with the recession that our country is in, one thing that's been found is that in communities across the country where there has been a campaign to support locally-owned businesses, those local businesses have done better than in communities where that don't have those campaigns to support the local stores in their communities. This is from the city of East Hampton. The mayor, Mayor Mike Totsnick, pledged or proclaimed that the month of December would be a bi-local month to encourage the citizens of East Hampton to support the local independent businesses in that city. And I've heard that you might be voting on a similar proclamation this evening. I would just encourage you, you know, to vote unanimously for it, just to support the local businesses that we have here in Northampton. So, you know, I thank you for thinking local first, and yeah, thank you very much for voting tonight on this issue.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm at the end of my list. So, yeah. Yep, go ahead.
Sorry for being late. I'm Marty Nathan. I'm at 24 Massasoit Street, and I just want to speak really briefly about the resolution about Human Rights Day. 60 years ago, on December 10th, 1948, the United Nations adopted the 30 Articles of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights as a response to the fascist mass murder and war in Europe. It was an attempt to define the rights of all people all around the world that had been swept away by Nazi violence, and to set goals for all of humanity for a world that would meet the fundamental needs of all. It defined as human rights: healthcare, marriage, freedom from torture and slavery, education, safety, unionization, and decent work conditions, protection from unlawful arrest it would take all night to go through it all. The effort was led by the United States and was one of many reasons that our country received worldwide respect for its leadership in the protection of the common person in all aspects of our very complicated lives. Recent years have certainly tarnished that respect and that reputation with war that most would agree that was based on false premises, the destruction of habeas corpus, torture, impoverishment of the already poor, elimination of healthcare, and employment for many. On Saturday, December 13th, a coalition of 31 grassroots organizations in the Pioneer Valley will meet on the steps of First Churches to read again that document, which still inspires us to be better than we are. On this 60th anniversary, we will be facing a new administration in Washington, one that has promised during the last year and a half to renew its pledge to those fundamental rights. This Human Rights Day, we will turn our attention from protesting the violations that we have seen to requests for fulfillment of the promise and pledge of the document. The mayor will read Article 1, and 30 other activists will read and comment on the rest of the declaration. We ask the city of Northampton to support us and give a pledge to reach out to its residents to help us bring to bear the rights that our parents promised us. Please support the Human Rights Declaration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Almost got away with it, didn't I, Roy?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, and ladies and gentlemen at home. My name is Roy C. Martin. I live at 81 Con Street, Northampton, Massachusetts. Tonight, I come to speak about the Panhandling Ordinance. You know, I'd like to say this to all of the ladies and gentlemen here at the City Council, all right? I'd like to invite you to take a two-day tent trip down into the meadows, right? Pick a tent, go down the meadows, right, and clean your pockets out and everything, and live like some of the people down in the meadows are living. Live in a tent, all right, for two days, just for two days, and see how rough it is, all right? Not having your bank accounts or anything else, not having your home, not having your food brought down to you, right? You've got to cook down there on a stove down there, or you've got to cook on a fireplace. All right, you've got to make your own meals, you've got to go up the street and panhandle a little bit, right, so they have money to buy a little bit of food. And I hear Mr. Connors on the radio, and he says, oh, he says there's so many of them that are not veterans down there that are playing the veteran card. Well, there is so many of them that are veterans down there, too, that's playing the veteran card, all right? There's a lot of veterans that are down here panhandling, and they're looking for a few extra pennies and stuff, right, just so they can make it, so they can live. Now, I know a few veterans that are living down there in the meadows, and they're living in tents, and they're down there, and it's cold, all right? Would you invite them into your home? Anyone of yours? Would you invite any one of them into your home to come and live in your home, right, to eat your food and be comfortable like you, all right? No, most of yous wouldn't. All right, you go down to 7-Eleven at 5 o'clock in the morning. They say there's shelters in this town. There is. There's Grove Street Homeless Shelter. Now, the service nurse is looking for money so to rebuild Grove Street, supposedly. But every time the service nurse gets money for Grove Street, you ask them where the money goes, right? You go down there, you want to take an audit of their books. And what do they tell you? They tell you that, oh, we had to have staff. That had to go for staff, right? It didn't go for the poor. It didn't go for the homeless. It didn't go for the hungry. It went for staff.
You've got about a half a minute, Roy.
All right, I knew you'd come me off. Just write it on the roll.
That's all.
All right, yeah. So anyways, right, to make that issue, right, like I said, right, you're all invited. Take a tent, go down there, stay for two days, clean your pockets out, all right? Put on the clothes, wear the clothes that they wear, all right? You know, they go out and they get two or three coats and stuff like that, all right? They go down in the poor box down there and get some clothes so they have clean clothes, all right? Be like them, just for two days, all right? You couldn't take it for five minutes, never mind two days. Now...
Thank you very much.
Oh, well, I was going to give a pitch for your city dump, you know? I don't think you need a city dump, but you need as more money as recycling.
Yeah, we're here every two weeks, Roy. You know that.
Ah, yeah, but I can't get up here every two weeks.
Okay. And on that note, we're going to move into the regular agenda. And first is Finance Committee. So I'll ask the clerk to call the role of Finance. Sue?
Here.
President?
May M. Barsh. David Murphy?
Here.
David Murphy.
So the first thing we're going to talk about is the capital plan, and then we're going to go, as I spoke to the Finance Committee members during their off-meeting, we're also going to begin with doing a budget update every meeting. So let's start with the capital plan. And I'm going to turn to Mr. Pyle to walk you through the capital plan.
I'm assuming that all of you had a chance to look at the mayor's transmit a letter to you that explains, I should move this down before I blow everybody's ears off. This was a difficult year for doing a capital plan. We had very limited funds to deal with, and because of that, even though there were many worthwhile programs, we were really only able to fund about 1.8 million in capital. The mayor and I worked very hard to find available funds in order to do as much as we could, and what we did was to look back at other programs that we had funded in previous fiscal years to see which ones were completed and may have had leftover tailings in them, or activities that have been done that we had approved in prior years that hadn't been started yet but could possibly be done in other manners. And that had to do primarily with ESCO, which we've talked about previously, the Energy Services Corporations, where we're going to do energy savings activities throughout the city. We're hoping that we can do some of the window and door projects that we had funded in prior years, and we took that money and reprogrammed it to other activities that we felt we needed to do this year. So there's a lot of juggling that we did in order to come up with the activities that we were able to fund. If you look at the Excel spreadsheet that is labeled "Mayor's Recommendation," on the very last page, 404, you'll see all the reprogrammed accounts that we accessed in order to make this program work. There were quite a few of them, but we felt that the activities that needed to be done were really critical. And I'll go down them very briefly, just so that people at home know what we are funding this year. We have some, we are currently in multiple-year programs for the school department, Smith Vocational, and the city for technology upgrades. This is the second year for the city. It's the fifth year for Smith Voc, and it's the third year for the public school systems. Those were all funded because we built them in. At the point that we originally approved those projects, we built them into our capital plan for all the future five years that they would exist. In the offset plan and development, we approved the tax title, tax open space land acquisition. This is basically conservation land that's going to be acquired through tax title. We're using free cash to purchase the tax titles of land that no one is paying the taxes on, that can then, that land can be added to our conservation. That, when we pay the tax title, it comes directly back to the city. Yes, sorry.
I see it might be helpful if you read the amounts as well.
Okay. The citywide technology is 47,994, and that's year two. The public schools' technology is 101,500, and that's year three. The Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School's school-wide technology is year five, and that's 100,000. Those have already been approved in prior years. This is a continuation of all three of those programs. The open space acquisition is $50,000, and that, once again, that's paying the tax title. So that money that we pay is actually coming right back to us directly. That's why we're taking that from free cash. Central Service Division is a new van for the electrician, and we are taking that from other available funds. We were able to convert some old accounts in order to pay for that.
It's a 1994 van, by the way, which is really ready.
Very old. It's dangerous to drive. The Fire Department administrative staff hybrid vehicle for 32,500, that's being paid for by inspection fees that the Fire Department generates from doing fire inspections citywide. The Parking Division, all three of these projects are paid for by parking meter receipts. We are going to repaint decks on the parking garage for a total amount of $275,000. This needs to be done periodically because the salt and sand and everything else, and all the grime and grit that comes in on tires tends to deteriorate the cement, and so this is a SonoGuard, is what it's called. It's a coating that protects the cement so the whole structure doesn't deteriorate, fall apart. The elevator is being rehabbed because of a lot of vandalism on that, and it just needs to be fixed up. It's 20 years old, and this is going to be done within, the security camera's going to be installed as well, so hopefully it won't get as much damage.
And that's $15,000.
That's $15,000. Thank you. The parking lot lighting, this is to replace the sodium fluorescent lights, which are 400 watts, with 180-watt LED fixtures. We expect that this is going to save money in the long run, and this is...
Save money in the short run.
And in the short run. We're trying desperately, citywide, to do whatever we can for energy-related savings because it helps us over time. Department of Public Works, the Water Street Bridge, there's been an enormous amount of under scouring, especially from the last floods that came through, and that needs to be fixed. The state has told us that we need to fix it. That's going to be $75,000. We had some money left over from the Ryan Ridge Bridge repairs that we're applying to this, as well as some FY 2007 FEMA funds from the floods that came through that we're applying to this, and the balance of this is going to come from free cash to do that. DPW equipment replacement, there was an enormous list of DPW equipment that needs to be replaced, and it really does need to be replaced. However, with the limited funds we had this year, we could only do the things that we could afford. They proposed $879,000 in capital equipment, and we're able to do about 180,000 of that. We're going to replace a 1984 six-wheeler truck with Chapter 90 funds for 120,000. We're going to place a tractor in the cemetery's division for 25,000, and replace a paving hot box for the highways division from the general funds for 30,000. This is so that they can make asphalt at their patching, yes.
I also see for number three, the landfill expansion at 300,000?
It's on our list, but we're not asking you for a vote.
We're not, that's not being brought forward at this time. That would only be brought forward at the point where we thought we were going forward on this.
But it's been on our capital improvements list for many years. But it's been on our capital improvements list for many years, many of you have voted for it on the capital improvement, but there's no bond authorization tonight on the, on the landfill.
Right, and that's not in the mayor's, um, transmit a letter, that's only on the requested list. It was recommended by the Finance Committee, uh, I'm sorry, the Capital Committee, I should not mix these up. It was recommended by the Capital Committee, uh, if this was to go forward, they would need these engineering, these, these funds would be used for engineering and design funds, and they would need those, uh, but at this point in time, it's not being brought forward to you because we haven't gotten to there yet. Okay? Uh, street resurfacing, the, um, the DPW has a backlog in excess of twelve million dollars, their FY oh-nine request was for two million dollars. All that we could really afford was what's funded by Chapter Ninety, that's four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We have a lot of streets that need a lot of paving, there's over a hundred miles of streets, a hundred and sixty miles of streets that need to be paved. Anyway, we do what we can. The Highway Salt Shed, Massachusetts, uh, Highway Division has got, Mass Highway has got a salt shed out by the DPW, um, on Route Nine there, that they're willing to do a swap with us, and this would be very helpful to us, it would give us a, a site close to the, uh, DPW headquarters that we could have a recycling center for, and we could do other things with, and also have another site for, um, a salt shed as well. The total cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, that's seventy-five thousand dollars that could come from the Solid Waste Fund for recycling activities, and seventy-five thousand dollars from the General Fund.
We're trying to move the recycling portion off of that main, um, DPW complex and down into the DP, into the former State Highway Yard. Yeah, we've been tight, that's right.
For a long time.
Well, it's taken a long time to get the state to the point where we have it now, so...
And there is not an order on that tonight because we're still not at a point with the state where it's ready to be funded, so we're, but it is approved to do, okay? I wanted to make that clear. Uh, in the School Department, uh, they had a couple of, uh, vehicles that were in desperate need of replacement, uh, they have a dump truck from nineteen ninety-six that is, um, totally rotted out from salt and what have you, that needs to be replaced, forty-five thousand dollars. They have a delivery truck that's used to move stuff from, um, department to department. Currently, it's a nineteen eighty-six vehicle that has, that they got, the schools got from the Sewer Division, um, so that's gonna get replaced. Uh, Bridge Street School has a detention basin sewer tie-in for twenty-two thousand dollars. They've got currently three dry wells out in the backside of Bridge Street School that have silted in to the point where they can no longer hold any water whatsoever, and the water is coming in and underlying the foundations. So we need to take those silted-in dry wells out, and we need to tie this into our, um, sanitary water system, drainage system, uh, so that's in there. So sewer system, I'll get it out eventually, yes, I always get the wrong words on that one. Yes, sanitary storm sewer system, thank you. Uh, there is also Bridge Street School exterior trim...
That's twenty-two thousand dollars.
Twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, twenty thousand dollars for Bridge Street School exterior trim repair replacement, the trim around the, uh, the roof area of the Bridge Street School is rotting out, it needs to be replaced and, um, painted and repaired, uh, because otherwise we've got infiltration, water infiltration that's coming in below the, um, roof, uh, envelope, so that needs to be fixed. Uh, one of the major issues that we really, the, uh, Capital Committee and the mayor and I are all, really, we need to do this, and that's the Leeds School Rubber Roof Replacement, there's been water infiltration out there, this is, uh, an old roof, it needs to be replaced, and we made every effort to replace it, that's sixty thousand dollars. The Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School, uh, they have a bus, uh, that needs to be replaced, uh, they want to replace it with a diesel school bus for fifty thousand dollars, and this is for, um, busing their students out to work sites, um, because it's part of their curriculum, and they need to go to the work sites, and this bus would do that for them, it replaces an old one that they have. Um, that's pretty much the, uh, thing, one project that we were not able to fund this year that, um, DPW, the mayor and I all feel is a critical need that needs to be dealt with, but we just don't have the money, uh, is the fuel pad at the DPW that needs to be replaced, it's absolutely critical that that gets replaced, it's just a very high-dollar item at this point, and it's a higher dollar item than we could fit into the FY oh-nine, uh, capital budget, but that will be one of our highest priorities for the next year.
I understand correctly, that fuel pad fuels all city vehicles?
Yes, it does.
Correct.
Not just DPW.
That's absolutely correct, and it's, the problem is that, uh, all the vehicles that come in there, they come in there with the salt and everything on their tires, it's totally deteriorated, all the concrete pad that's there, and that whole structure is in desperate need of being replaced.
And the price also kept going up.
It's like two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars.
You know, we started with a much lower price.
We started at about two-hundred thousand, it's now up to like two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, and just got to be more than we could fit within the amount of money we had available in this current year.
But we do need to do it.
Yep.
So, so, um, if you just, if, what we did was prioritize a couple of things, um, securing buildings and making sure that buildings roofs or building envelopes are, uh, are taken care of, we prioritized safety in terms of vehicles, making sure we had vehicles that, that we need to have, that, and making sure they're safe. When there's a funding stream that's not the General Fund, we are using it, that is the fire inspection for the fire vehicle, or the, um, for DPW, we're using Chapter Ninety where we can for, um, their vehicles, and then, and the parking deck on the maintenance issues there, we're using parking receipts to pay for that. We also, the one energy project we were able to get to outside the ESCO is the LED lighting for the parking lots, and if that's successful in keeping our costs down, we're gonna be looking at doing that in some other places as well, so those have been the main priorities, are really securing buildings and making sure vehicles were, uh, safe and, and in good shape, and then the third item was completing the technology plans that we had set out for these schools and cities, so those are our three main focuses in a very tight year for capital improvements. Okay? Um, there are really, um, two, three, four, there's six orders, so, uh, let me, do you wanna do them one by one, or do you wanna do them as a group?
I have questions about the orders.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you want me, do you want me to move them as one by one, or do you have another question? Okay, so let's start with, um, the sum of, uh, on the recommendation of the mayor and the Capital Committee ordered that the sum of one hundred thousand dollars is appropriated as a part of the FY oh-nine capital plan in addition to the one hundred thousand previously appropriated on June twenty-first, two thousand and seven, for the fifth year, the five-year Smith Volk and Vocational and Agricultural High School shop equipment, computers, school-wide technology plan, and that to meet such appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor's authorized to borrow two hundred thousand dollars under Mass General Law, did you mean a hundred thousand there? Uh, under Mass General, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, subsection nine, or any other enabling authority, and that the school committee is authorized to take any other action to necessary to carry out the project.
It's the two one words.
Yeah, it's what it is, that's what it is. So we had a motion to approve in Finance?
So, a second?
A second.
And then, is this the one you have questions on?
No.
No, okay. Um, and each one of these has a separate, um, enabling legislation because the length of the borrowings are different for each one, so...
This is the only one that's a borrowing.
Okay, well, there's right, the rest of the cash, right. And when we have a borrowing, you'll see different lengths, right? Any discussion in Finance on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is, that's right, Mr. Cash. Uh, upon the recommendation of the mayor and the Capital Committee to order that the sum of forty-two thousand dollars is appropriated, as a part of the FY two thousand and nine capital plan for the following project, amount, capital, uh, twenty-two thousand for the Bridge Street School Extension Basin Sewer Tie-In, and twenty thousand dollars from the Bridge Street School Exterior Trim Repair Replacement, and that to meet the appropriation, seven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-two cents is transferred from the FY oh-nine capital account that, that the following amounts totaling the aggregate twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, thirty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents are appropriated for the following purpose, being hereby our transfer to these two projects. The JFK Tennis Report Court Repairs, thirty-eight, thirty-eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents, the Bridge Street School Roof Parapet, six thousand dollars, Bridge Street School Bus Loop Engineering, sixty-nine hundred and forty dollars, and the, and the Leeds Building Envelope Study, twelve thousand dollars, and the remaining amount of six thousand dollars, six thousand and fifty dollars is borrowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Seven, subsection three A for the Smith Volk, E, Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School E-Building Roof, being hereby is transferred to these two projects. So we need a motion in favor of that? A second?
Second.
Okay. Um, the, um, Bridge Street School Roof Parapet and the Bridge Street School, uh, Loop Engineering are still projects that are on the list, that we're just, we're not gonna borrow, we're using this money to take care of the most immediate Bridge Street School needs, and then we would move back, look at the next projects, okay? Bridge Street and Leeds both are about the same age in terms of their renovations, and we're starting to see, uh, age, right? Yeah.
And this is where I just wanted, Mr. Pyle, to, to talk about these items, um, you know, the tennis court, the other things, 'cause I'm assuming these are from previous years?
Right.
Yes, and they're, uh, the...
Just the relationships.
Completed, uh, that was the money left over from a completed project that we had authorized in prior years. The roof parapet, uh, we had approved that in prior years, it was for more than that, we had done some work on it, I believe that's what was left over from it.
I think there's still more, but I think you're right.
Yeah, um, and the bus loop engineering, some engineering has been done, this is what's remaining from that, um, and the Leeds Building Envelope Study, that had not been done, and we're taking that, um, out of, out of here, but we are, in a subsequent article you'll see, or subsequent council order, you'll see that we're doing the roof repair.
Hmm, so essentially, just so it's clear to people, we're taking this leftover money from other projects and transferring it to other things?
That's correct.
This is not money we're spending on these things now, but money that had previously been appropriated that we're taking because it had been spent and using it elsewhere?
It had been, yes, this is the balance remaining in a number of accounts, and you'll see this throughout this evening, there's, that, there's monies left over, especially the things that have, that were borrowed at one time, anything where it says the amounts remaining that were borrowed under means that those are projects that are completed, they were borrowed for those purposes, and under Mass General Laws, we're allowed to reprogram that for similar purposes that could be borrowed for the same amount of time, and that's what I've tried to do here.
I, I just would make the point too, that when, when the Capital Committee brought their recommendations to, through, through Mr. Pyle, to me, there was definitely not enough money to do everything that was on the list, so I asked Mr. Pyle to go with department heads and look at every previous open capital project, and is it happening? Is it done? Is there any money left over? Is it something we're moving into the ESCO? And really scour those projects and see what we can come up with.
So when we vote on these orders, some of the things we're spending money on, and some of the things, it's leftover money we're transferring in, isn't it all things that we're spending money on?
That's correct.
You ready to vote on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The next is, upon the recommendation of mayor and Capital Committee to order that the sum of sixty thousand dollars is appropriated as a part of the FY two thousand and nine capital plan to the Leeds School Roof Replacement, and to, to meet such appropriation, eight hundred and twen, forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents is transferred from the FY oh-nine capital account, and the following remaining accounts borrowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, section seven three A, totaling in the aggregate fifty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents, being hereby our transfer to this project. The Smith Vocational Building Deheating, the Smith Vocational Building Roof, the, uh, E-Building Roof, Jackson Street Boiler Burner, uh, I'm sorry, the Building Deheating was three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents, Bill, E-Building Roof was nineteen thousand dollars, Jackson Street Boiler Burner was twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, the Dairy Barn Roof is fourteen thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, and the, the Multispecies Roof Barn is one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents.
A whole approval. Second?
Second, any discussion on this? I do wanna compliment Mr. Pyle getting all these pennies, correct?
It ain't easy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is, it gets even more complicated. Next is, upon the recommendation of the mayor and Finance Committee, ordered that the sum of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is appropriated as a part of the FY two thousand and nine capital plan for departmental equipment and vehicle replacements as follows. A twenty-five thousand for the city electrician van, thirty thousand for the, to replace the nineteen ninety-four hot box of the DPW, forty-five thousand dollars for the district-wide dump truck in the North Hampton Public Schools, thirty-five thousand for the North Hampton Public Schools District-Wide Delivery Truck, and fifty thousand dollars for the Smith Vocational School Bus. And that to meet such appropriation, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents is transferred from the capital account, and that the following amounts in the total aggregate, aggregate sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents are appropriated, uh, for the following purpose, being hereby our transfer to these projects. The emergency backup generator for ten thousand dollars, and the municipal building elevator six thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, and that the following remaining amounts borrowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, section seven nine, totaling in the aggregate ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents, being hereby our transfer to this project. Tree truck replacement, ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, and the school food services van, twenty-six dollars. A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, this is the, um, for the parking repair, uh, the parking garage issues and the lights in the lot, so this is upon the recommendation of the mayor and the Capital Committee, ordered that the sum of thirty, three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars being hereby is transferred from the Parking Meter Reserve Fund to the General Fund FY two thousand and nine capital program for the following parking division capital items. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to test for salinity and install SonoGuard coating, fifteen thousand dollars to redo the elevator interior, and thirty-two thousand dollars to replace the armory lot fixtures with LED fixtures. So a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then finally, um, uh, upon the recommendation of the mayor and the Capital Committee ordered that the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars being hereby is transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund to the General Fund FY two thousand and nine capital program for the replacement of a nineteen sixty-nine Massey tractor. Is there a second? Tractor's older than many people in this room. It's gonna go live at the Savile House now. Uh, not quite. Uh, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we will be coming forward with more capital, um, items as the year progresses, but, uh, those are the ones that we want to bring forward right now.
Yes, I should mention, any of the, um, capital items that have any funding from free cash were not included this evening because free cash has not been certified at this point in time. Once free cash is certified, we'll bring them forward as well.
I was hoping to be able to use the, um, oh, yeah, the other thing I wanted to just mention to you is, again, we are, uh, running into tight times in our Veteran Services budget, we have, um, many, many veterans on, um, Veterans Benefits, and I wanna say that, um, I, I, I don't believe that Mr. Connors worries at all about giving people benefits when they are veterans and they are entitled to the benefits, so, but I do think he worries a little bit about people who say they're veterans and they're not, because every time you see somebody on the street with a sign that says they're a veteran, he goes and offers them help, so I, I wanna thank him for doing that. I am gonna be coming in December eighteenth to ask you for a transfer out of free cash into his budget because he's short...
Stabilization.
Stabilization, I'm sorry, because we don't think free cash will be ready by the point, so at the next meeting, we'll be coming forward and asking you for two readings to replenish that account. We are already short, and this is just about the time last year that we ran short, and...
Do we have an estimate?
Probably about eighty thousand. So, uh, this is an account that, when I started, was about sixty thousand dollars, and we're now well up over three hundred thousand dollars annually on this account.
And the reason we're going for the two readings is because we won't have a meeting on the first Thursday in January, 'cause that's January first.
And so there's only one meeting in, uh, in, uh...
And we couldn't get it ready in time for this evening's meeting.
Right. Okay, um, I, about eighty thousand dollars.
He's gonna do it anyhow.
Well, we don't really have a choice, and it's the right thing to do, so...
Plus, there's a tremendous amount of increase of veterans that Steve is getting constantly, like, all female in, you know, and...
Right, he's got a lot of people he's working with. So I had said to you at the last meeting, and then I talked to Finance Committee about doing a regular briefing on the, uh, where we are in the budget as we move forward into this next budget year, which is gonna be, um, I think, the most difficult budget year that we will have had since I've been here. Uh, I'm working with Mr. Pyle on, uh, we started this, I think, last year maybe, or the year before?
Last year.
Doing a five-year projection, really, it doesn't, uh, when you look at it, you'll remember that last year when we did the five-year projection, it showed this year's general fund balance, but, fund out of balance, I think about three million dollars when we started the discussion. We were, we're, we now are in balance for this year, but as I give this, you know, don't be, so don't be totally shocked at the number at the bottom, is I guess what I'm trying to say, but it's, it's a scary number. Um, so do you wanna make sure the press gets a copy of this, too? We'll start them around this way and that way, and a few more. And then, um, I'm gonna hand these out after, so, um, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get this whole thing to work. You sure one? We need one, here, here's another one. Here's another one. And if you need any more. I want to just talk you through some of the assumptions on the revenue. I don't know if we're going to be able to, okay. You want to see if you can get it to work? So if you look at the general fund assumptions, so the taxes include, I guess maybe I should hand these out too.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
There's two different ones, so.
These need to go in that direction.
Yep. You have to take one of each. I hope there's enough there. So the assumptions on the taxes are that we'll go up our regular, the amount that we're allowed to go up by law, which is two and a half percent. That'll be about 800. Make sure they have enough. I'm not sure they do. One of each. Yeah, I did, I sent. Okay, sorry about that. Want to check on those guys? Which one do you need? Okay, these have no new state aid. I need one of the other ones, bud. Okay.
How many of these do we have?
You should have one of each. One that says no new state aid and one says 10% state aid cut. Okay?
Ah, yes.
All right. So if you look at the no new, if you look at it in conjunction with the spreadsheet under the taxes, you see that the number's going up. The assumption is we're going up $892,000 in our general allowed proposition, two and a half allowed increase of two and a half percent. Then we're going up, and this is probably too generous. We have $600,000 program been there for new growth. That may be too generous, but we're putting it in now. And the next number, which you'll see is a declining number, $122,121, that's the amount that the voted on overrides are going down this year or on the downward slide on that debt service. So this year we're spending 121, we will assess that the taxpayers, $121,000 less than we had. Fees, which I didn't spell right, obviously, fees, charges, and fines are going up a little bit. Excise tax is essentially flat. We're not expecting to get any new excise tax particularly, because people aren't really buying new cars. I'm programming a little bit increase in hotel motel, but otherwise it's really flat. And in this scenario, I'm saying no new state aid, okay? Federal revenue we're projecting going up a little bit, that's the Medicaid reimbursement to the schools for the healthcare that they provide in the schools as a part of the child's program. And the Medicare Part D reimbursement for our retirees who are on our health insurance. Inter-fund transfers are from the Sewer Water and Solar Waste Enterprise Fund and this is a, right now, a little bit of a plug number because we don't have the health insurance number yet, but so we've, it's about 2% increase. It's probably going to be more once we put the health insurance in. Stabilization fund is the big number that's going down. Remember, we used $657,000 of stabilization this year and the schools used $640,000 of one-time money. So if you put the two together, that's where we are, okay? So the total growth in revenue is on the bottom of the page, $279,000. When you put all the reds together with all the greens, and for the people at home, I've done a bar chart that we're, we are trying to get up on the screen that shows you what's going up and what's going down. And when you put the reds and the greens together in this scenario, we have total growth in revenue of about $279,000. Now, there's some very broad assumptions in there right now, because it's still early in the season, but I'm assuming no new state aid in this. And I think that's not such an unrealistic scenario. Unfortunately, the other scenario is also relatively realistic, which is a 10% aid in state, a cut in the state aid. We're hearing that the lottery is down, has been down actually for the last couple of years. They've been making, holding us harmless and giving us general fund revenue to make up what they think the lottery would have made, but I'm not sure they're going to be able to afford that this year. So I use 10% cut in all of our major state accounts, lottery.
Chapter 70, lottery, and municipal.
The additional, what's used to be, is known as additional assistance, which is only about $600,000 to us. But we've cut each one of those by 10%. In this scenario, that's the deepest red bar in that graphic. In that scenario, our total growth in revenue is a $1.8 million decrease in our revenue next year. So we're not looking at growth if we lose 10% local aid. I want to remind you that in 2004, we lost 20% in all of those local aid accounts. 20% in lottery, 20% in school aid, and 20% additional assistance. And we're still below our 2002 school aid number. We still get less in school aid than we got. So that, this is not a totally unrealistic picture, unfortunately. Counselor, did you have a question?
I was just concerned, Mayor, about the state aid and the lottery. Yes, we've heard that.
Right.
Even on TV, you know, they're pushing the lottery. You've never seen that like that. My concern is, the state itself, our government, why are they not doing something about the hotel tax and so forth like that? I mean, that would generate some more money for the cities and towns.
I went to Boston yesterday, yesterday, and testified at a municipal relief hearing along with other members of the MMA and other city and town folk to push for some different ingredients in the municipal relief package, including a local option meals tax and hotel Taking away the tax exemption on personal property for the telecommunications companies that they've had since 1916. And to look at some, there are some other pieces of relief that are being looked at. For instance, we're on schedule to fully fund our pension by 2028. And for people who have Social Security, the federal government, including me, the federal government's not on track to fund Social Security by 2028. So we would hope that we could, we would hope that we could extend that plan by a couple of years, since the market has an effect on what we can do with that. How you doing there, David? She's now, okay.
And actually, that is something I think that the state's going to look at, because even the state retirement system has lost, they've lost 28% of their value just in the last quarter. So I think that the state's going to take a very serious look at the funding schedules for both the state retirement as well as the municipal retirement systems. And if that happened, we would readjust our actuarial costs to the city for each fiscal year, because that would project it out that much further. If we could get even three years, it would lower our current year costs by a significant amount.
I want to remind people what that full funding means, because it's sometimes scary if you're a city retiree at home watching this or in hearing that we're not fully funded. The city's obliged to pay out what we're obliged to pay out under the retirement plan. Our employees don't pay into Social Security, so they don't, they're not getting that. But we take the money that we earn from the pension system and we make up some of the difference through general fund dollars. And so when we're fully funded, theoretically, we won't have to make it up to general fund.
There's a current year cost in the retirement system and there's a future cost. Those two components, the future cost is on an actuarial basis, based on what our future cost will be to fund everybody who is currently in, who is currently retired, everyone who is currently an active employee. That's our actuarial cost for what's going to happen in the future. We have current year costs as well. Those two amounts combined are what the city's appropriation is each year. So the current year cost is a fixed cost. Those are people who are currently retired. But the actuarial cost, if you project that out for even three more years, that will decline. So that would be an amount that we would say an appropriation within our general budget.
So that's on the revenue side. And then if you look at the spreadsheet that I handed you, what we did was make some assumptions on the expense side. We're moving everything forward. We have contractual obligations to employees that we have through union contracts and generally the raises have been in the 3% area. So we moved those forward. We looked at our OM, our ordinary maintenance, and we're moving that forward really on the one and a half to 2% basis. And most of the lines, the only place that we're looking at more is, I think, in energy and a few other spots where we know costs are going to be a little bit higher, but we're being very, very, very stringent on the OM side. So we're looking at, when you put together the revenue gap on a 10%, this scenario that I gave you was a 10% aid cut scenario, right? This is the 10% aid cut scenario. So if you take the 10% aid cut and add that to the growth in revenue, growth in costs that we have, based on our various contractual obligations, et cetera, we have a $5.3 million gap going into next year. And I think I read the newspaper that Amherst was looking at somewhat of a similar number. Am I right about that, Counselor Barstow?
Same way.
Yeah, relatively similar sized budget and looking at a similar sized gap. We are making some assumptions here. Obviously, we have a pension number, but we're making an assumption on health insurance. Health insurance is a growing part of our budget, as you know, and that if we have a 10% increase in health insurance, that's a million dollars of that gap.
That's what I.
And that's what we plugged in here. So we used a 10% assumption because that's a fair assumption, given what's going on in the market. Now, we've beat that assumption. I'm looking in, I think, I'm looking at Scott from the firefighter. I think we've beat that the last couple of years. But we have to start with an assumption that's a reasonable assumption and 10% is a reasonable assumption. So that's where we are in terms of that. Fuel, very difficult to figure out what to plug in. You know, we put in very high numbers for this year in our budgets and we're fortunately going to be a little bit lower. And I wanted to mention to Counselor Murphy that we had not locked in on gas. So we have finally locked in on gas.
Locked in on December 1st.
Which I think is good, because we locked in not the lowest number, but a low number.
Lower than it would have been in September, yes.
We'll be okay, but we're paying attention to all that as well. So these are early numbers. I'm basically going to take this same kind of format and add a few more things and bring it back to you each time. And I'm going to have a training on the machine. Sound like Joanie, don't I? Teach me how to use the machine so I can know how to show it, so we can send people at home also see it. Yeah.
Mayor, also on the health insurance.
Yeah.
Are we still looking at like the GIC state insurance?
Thanks for reminding me about that. We have been talking to the unions and it was very active Insurance Advisory Committee. The timeline, as I had told you, was very tight. So your authorization is open-ended and we continue to have those conversations. But we missed the deadline for this year and I wasn't, as you recall, we thought it would be pretty tight. It's a very complicated plan. There's good, there's good things about it and there's some things that are more problematic. So we really have to do a full exploration of that. I will say that our increases in health insurance from year to year are comparable to the GIC. Our basic plans are a little bit more expensive than theirs. And that's just because we're in a smaller pool.
Yeah, right.
Right? So, yeah.
Just to summarize, because folks at home didn't get to see all this.
Right.
Basically ranges from best-case scenario being rather awful to worst-case scenario being horrendous.
Correct.
Terrible, frightening.
Yes. For the state to fully fund Chapter 70 next year is $300 million. And if you read the newspaper, I think it's today, November tax receipts were off on the state level by $40 million or something like that. And so to get to that $300 million to fully fund Chapter 70, I think is going to be very difficult for them. So if they don't fully fund Chapter 70, what I think they need to do is fully fund those communities, they have to fund the communities that are below foundation level, which is this, an amount of money that's determined under law that you have to spend on education in a community. We're above foundation, so we wouldn't be one of the communities that necessarily would be funded. And in fact, maybe one of the communities that's cut because we are above foundation. That's what happened in 2003. Yeah.
I've had a lot of black on the streets, you know, employees using their vehicles to go home.
Yep.
There's a reason for that. If you don't do it and they want them for snowplowing, they just don't answer their phone. But if they got the car, he'll come in. And I think it wouldn't hurt to just see how many does it.
I have an inventory of everybody that has a, what we call, take-home vehicle. And I'm monitoring that very carefully. There's two things about the take-home vehicles. One is, we give them to people who have some sort of public safety or DPW, police and fire, the three places where you're really going to see them. And I think there's one or two in schools for people who have to answer after-hours calls. We've been actually asking people to use city vehicles rather than their own, because the IRS mileage reimbursement rate is.
50 cents a mile.
Right. And it's cheaper for us to have them use our vehicles and gas up at our pumps at the cheaper gas price than to give them 58, or what is it, 50.8 cents a mile? So.
It's too late to look at it.
Yeah, that's right. And I'd rather not have to reimburse people on the per-mileage rate and have them use our vehicles when available. So we have a vehicle now that we have the Board of Health Inspector using as opposed to them using their own car and getting a check from us. They go gas up at that gas pump that we need to fix, but it's cheaper for us to do it that way. Yeah.
I want to commend you for really taking the lead here to make it clear to all of us and the people at home how grim things may be in the next year. None of us like to hear this, but at least we know, as much ahead as I think you know, and we can all begin to think about how we want to face these tough times that are coming.
No, thank you. I'm going to do this every, every city council meeting, basically. I'll give you an update, okay? With the audiovisual assistance too. As soon as I get, I guess I have to get like Level 4 training or something to be able to do that. David Narcoitz will have to.
I'll be bold with this.
Right, right. I think I probably have to get a 10-year-old to train me, right? The story is, so. Thank you. So a motion to close finance would be in order.
So move in second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And a roll call would be a good idea now.
Counselor Barstow?
Present.
Counselor Carney? Counselor Gospel?
Here.
Counselor Martin LeBarre?
Present.
Counselor Raymond LeBarre?
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Narcoitz?
Present.
Counselor Regman?
Present.
Counselor Spector?
Present.
Thank you. We're going to make a change in the agenda. The city clerk has been patiently sitting here. Many members of our fire department have been patiently sitting here as well, so we're going to move them up on the agenda. I'm very happy tonight that we have the appointment of two permanent firefighters, James Mulcaren and Natalie Stolmeyer. And the chief is here, looking very chiefly. And many of our fire department members are here too, so I'm glad you're all here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to continue our tradition of hiring some really great people. I'd ask Jim and Natalie to join me at the podium. We're going to embarrass them in a moment, but both of them have completed our full-time orientation training. They've done very well. Jim is a paramedic. Natalie is in training to become a paramedic. And I've really told them that they need at least a 15-minute speech, so we'll let them off in a few minutes. Jim, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jim Mulcaren. First of all, I just wanted to say I'm very proud to be here tonight. This is actually the proudest moment of my career. I've looked forward to this for a long time. I want to thank my family for being here. It's no small task getting Little Noah out of the house this late, so. I do want to thank Mayor Higgins, Chief Duggan, for the opportunity to serve the city of Northampton as a firefighter. And I'd also like to thank everyone at the fire department for the tremendous amount of support we've seen since day one there. We've been on for about two months now, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, pardon Natalie Stolmeyer. And I'd also like to thank city council members, Mary Claire Higgins and Chief Duggan, as well as my fellow firefighters that came out to support me today and Jim as well. I'd like to thank my family and friends who are also here. My family's at home in my heart, but my friends are here to support me. Like as Jim spoke of, we have seen such extremely amount of supportive individuals in the fire department coming out and stepping up to take us in. And not only that, but I am really appreciative of the mayor and what you've done to help support the fire department.[1745.88] support the fire department. And I'm extremely grateful for being a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I want to mention to family members, if they have a camera and they want to take a picture, they're welcome to come up. This is a camera-friendly event. And if you don't have a camera, that's okay, too. And I'm going to ask the city clerk to step up. The city clerk is suffering from a cold, so I got to get her home. So, you know, the best place to take a picture is to stand back here.
Yeah, come on around.
I state your name. To solemnly swear, faithfully and impartially, discharge the duties of firefighter in the Northampton Fire Department. In accordance with the rules and laws of the fire department, the constitution of this commonwealth, and the ordinances of the city of Northampton, to the best of my knowledge and ability. So, yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I state your name. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Did you get them all?
All right. It didn't work.
And thanks to all the firefighters for coming out to support your fellow department members. And thank you to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Mayor Wendy, go over and watch this. Good. Okay. Well, let them get them a minute to clear out.
Congratulations.
Oh, boy. I hate to do this to the members of the Best Practices Committee, but we did have a hearing scheduled for a half. Do you mind?
Go home. Get some rest. Geez, how you doing? How you doing?
Shouldn't take her long. We have a public hearing for a petition for a joint or identical pole relocation at West Farms Road.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Dan.
And I need a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause now and hear from the proponent for this joint or identical. It's an interesting phrase.
Yes. My name is Al Vasette. I'm with Verizon. I'm here on behalf of Mass Electric Company as well. And this petition is part of the Route 66 road relocation that's been going on for several months now. And what happened was, on West Farms Road, that intersection was widened. And when it was widened, the pole on the first pole on West Farms Road on the west side is really right up against that road. And there was just no place to put it. So what we're going to do is take that pole and put it on the other side, where there's more than ample enough room to place the pole in the anchor. Much better situation. The pole on the west side is close to the buildings and the property line, and it just doesn't make any sense. So what we're just asking for is just to relocate to the other side.
Okay.
Pretty simple.
Are there any opponents? Are there any questions for Mr. Vasette? Yeah.
Being a city councilor in a board, I believe you have been watching the pole movements, and I have to agree with you, it is time to move that one.
Yes, yeah.
When will the pole... The old pole be removed?
Well, we have to place a new one. And so it was all sort of hinging on...
I understand that. But often you place a new one, and the old poles live on.
It should be... It should be removed when we place the new one.
Okay. All right.
If it's not, you have my number.
The councillor's going to call me, and I'm going to call you if it's not.
Right, because there is still poles, new ones that have been placed, and the old ones are still standing.
Yeah, we're aware of the poles.
Got to move the wires, apparently, that's...
We're aware that there's some old poles.
Okay.
Okay. A motion to close the hearing would be in order?
Second it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Close now. On this pole petition, we'd like to amend it with our usual amendment, which gives us... Yeah, I think we're done already on this one.
Second it.
To approve it in seconds. Any discussion on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, thank you. Now we'll get back to the regular order. And the next item on the agenda is the...
For minutes.
Minutes, right. So we have approval of minutes?
You'll approve.
Any discussion? The aliens have something to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Now we have a couple... Nope. Now we have the presentation. Yeah, let's do that, because these folks are here. Okay, so this is the Ad-Hoc Committee on Best Practices in Northampton Decision-Making, and I think most of the members are here. Yeah. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mayor Higgins, and councillors, and ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Best Practices in Northampton Decision-Making, I'm happy to present to you the committee's draft recommendations. A copy of the report has been provided to the mayor and to each councillor. Members of the public may access the report on our website, which is www.NorthamptonMA.gov/bestpractices. Our committee was created by a resolution passed by the city council on December 6, 2007. On February 7, 2008, the city council appointed seven members to serve on this committee. The councillors... Three councillors and four citizens. Specifically, the members of the committee are Lisa DiPiano, Alex Geislin, Wendy Foxman, and me, as well as councillor-at-large Michael Bardsey, and councillors David Narcoitz and Robert Reckman. Lisa DiPiano, who was not able to attend tonight, and I were designated by the committee to be co-chairs. In accordance with provisions of the December 7 resolution, the committee undertook a plan of action, the tails of which are set forth in the draft report. It should be noted that in keeping with the goal of best practices, to include the public to the fullest extent possible, all of our meetings were conducted in accordance with the open-meeting law, were announced widely to the public, all but one of our meetings were videotaped, and then were either rebroadcast on NCTV or available on our website. Members of the public were invited to participate fully in our meetings. The presentation of this report to the city council begins a 90-day period for public comment. In this regard, the committee has scheduled a public hearing on January 5, 2009. It is our anticipation that there will be other opportunities to gather comments from the public. With limited resources and a relatively short time period within which to complete our mission, the committee decided that the most effective way for us to collect data from the public would be through public forums. One such forum was conducted on May 13, and the other was focused on the Meadows Land Use Plan, and that was conducted on August 25. In addition, data was collected from city officials through questionnaires and face-to-face interviewers. The data obtained at those public forums and through our in-reach process were carefully analyzed and categorized into 10 meaningful groupings, which constituted the basis for the recommendations contained in this draft report. At this time, I'd like to invite Alex Geislin and Wendy Foxman to discuss the recommendations of the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. I'm just going to read through the recommendations, just the headings. If you turn to page 4, it's actually a short document. Most of this is our appendices that illustrate the work that we did and the information that we gathered. Page 4 begins the recommendations. We have 10 recommendations. They're general, but beneath them, there are several more specific items, and I'm not going to read those. So I'm just going to read through the general recommendations, starting with number one. Actually, it's on page 5. Number one, and I would just like to say that these are in no particular order, they're not prioritized, they're simply listed here. Number one, develop written protocols for conducting various types of public meetings for city committees, departments, and other decision-making bodies. And I just want to say that under each of these umbrella recommendations, we ask you to consider the following, and you'll see those detailed recommendations. Second one, the city should assume an ongoing responsibility for explaining the detailed functions and processes of municipal government. Three, the mayor, finance committee, and finance director should assume an ongoing responsibility for explaining the city's annual budget in detail. Four, the city of Northampton should improve its website to be more user-friendly, ensure greater consistency in the posting of public documents, for example, agendas, minutes, committee reports, et cetera, and increase its overall effectiveness for public communication. Five, review and, if necessary, revise current procedures for making appointments to city committees, boards, commissions, and other positions to ensure that the process is clear, consistent, and democratic, and that appointments reflect the diversity of the community. Six, commission an independent review of the Office of Planning and Development. Seven, create a vision/mission statement for city government that prioritizes citizen engagement and participation, ethical behavior, and best practices in decision-making. Eight, designate a standing committee to continue the work begun by the Ad-Hoc Committee on Best Practices to improve city decision-making and promote public participation. Nine, review the city council rules and procedures and city ordinances in relationship to best practices, goals, and guidelines. And 10, initiate a comprehensive review of the city charter, both to see if general modernization of the document is warranted and to examine several areas of expressed public concern about our current structure of government. We discussed last night that, since this is your first seeing it, you haven't had a chance to read it, I think all of us, if not most of us, would be available for your next meeting if you wanted to discuss or ask questions. Thank you, Alex.
I just want to make a pitch for the ongoing process. This is obviously a draft document. The next phase, really, is to review principally the recommendations. As Jim said, there's a meeting scheduled here, a public forum, on the 5th of January. The in-city council chamber is beginning at 6:30.
6:30.
6:30. There's a planning meeting scheduled for the 29th, also here at 8:30 in the morning, if anybody would like to join in that process to talk about the forum and talk about the ongoing process. Making recommendations is much easier, obviously, than implementing. Getting, you know, candor to the public involved in a... We never really sparked, I think, a city-wide conversation, and we tried to. We certainly have a lot of input from a lot of people, and we're hoping in the... Over the next couple of months, that we're going to hear from a lot of people. The recommendations, when you read through them, you'll see that they're fairly comprehensive, but by no means have we exhausted the subjects. And we're very interested in what the city council has to say. The success is obviously depends largely on the city council. It's your document, the ball will soon be in your hands. We hope that you'll carry it forward. And to that end, we certainly could schedule a particular forum if you want to meet as a group, or come to your meetings, as Wendy said. I think, having said that, I guess the other thing I'd like to say is that we did succeed is really being available. Thanks principally to Adam Cullen, but also to NCTV. Virtually all but one meeting was taped and is available, and is still available. Sit at home and see what people actually said. We'd really like to extend that to a lot more of the city. Meetings were published well in advance. The agendas were public well in advance. So I guess... And I miss Lisa DiPiano. She was up... She's coming back, but she was a really vital part of the committee, so she's going to get here tonight. So thank you.
Want to speak to the process, or speak to the reporter? Do you want to hold it until people have had a chance to review it?
I would only just reiterate that it's downloadable, and there's also a way to send us comments on the site through our Google user group. We have a Google user group, and there's a link to it. So there's an email address that people can use that'll broadcast any feedback. Or all the email addresses for the individual members of the committee are on the website, and that's another way if people want to submit feedback.
And if somebody wanted to drop you a snail mail, they could...
Of course, yeah. All that...
Send it to the CEO.
Yeah, all that information is up here, too.
Great. Great. Counselor?
I would request that this is on our agenda for our next meeting, in case there are questions and discussion. And engaging in that way and answering some questions on the council, I think, will help to generate the public interest in this as well, so...
It's a good idea. I want to thank the members of the committee, both the city councillors and actually the members of the committee who are not city councillors, citizen members, for all the time and attention that they've paid. It's obvious in the document I read through today, I want to thank you very much for the work that you did. And I think it's... I hope it will spark some really interesting discussions in the city, so thanks for doing it. So it sounds like the council would like to invite you back to their next meeting, and we'll schedule some time on the next agenda for discussion. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry you had to sit through so much other stuff before you got it. Any other questions or comments at this point, or are we... I guess not. Okay. Now we'll do a couple of proclamations. Bi-local first month... Bi-local first month, December 2008. Whereas local businesses provide essential employment opportunities for citizens in the Pioneer Valley region and contribute to the character and unique feel of our community; and whereas the city of Northampton recognizes the important role that local businesses have in our economy and is strongly committed to growing our local business base; and whereas the Business Alliance for Local Living Economies and its partners have launched a Bi-Local First campaign to promote and support locally-owned businesses; and whereas the city of Northampton desires to support Valley's campaign in recognition of its important work in nourishing the diverse, strong, and high-quality local businesses that contribute to our community in so many ways. Now, therefore, I, Mary Claire Higgins, Mayor of the city of Northampton, proclaim the month of December 2008 to be Bi-Local First Month in Northampton, and urge all our citizens to support, encourage, or participate in choosing local businesses first when making purchases. And I... Looks like Dan left, but we'll make sure that Valley gets that. And then, secondly, this is the International Human Rights Day Declaration. I need a suspension of Rule 14 before I can read this.
So move.
Is there a second? So I heard Counselor Hostel and Spector. International Human Rights Day, December 13, 2008. Whereas December 2008 marks the 60th annual anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights by the United States General Assembly, following the defeat of fascist expansionism and genocide; and whereas, as stated in the preamble, recognition of the inherent dignity and of the equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family is the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace in the world; and whereas the city of Northampton has long held a prominent place in American history with resident's support of peace and economic, political, races, racial, religious, and gender rights; and whereas, on December 13, 2008, residents of Northampton will again bring together women, men, and children to publicly declare their support of humanity's hopes, as expressed in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Now, therefore, I, Mary Claire Higgins, Mayor of the city of Northampton, proclaim Saturday, December 13, 2008, to be International Human Rights Day in Northampton, and urge residents to support all efforts to secure for all people the freedoms enumerated in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And I will make sure Marty Nathan gets that. We did the appoint... We have a resolution for the TIF, the Taxing from Financing. This is in second reading. This is for VCA. This is the recommended by the mayor and EDLU that ordered it. Whereas, VCA alloy LLC project, as proposed, is consistent with and can reasonably be expected to benefit significantly from including in the Village and Hospital Hill Economic Opportunity Area, and the project will not overburden the city's infrastructure and utilities servicing Village Hill, and the project has a reasonable chance of increasing employment opportunities for residents of Northampton and the Greater Franklin County Economic Target area. It is hereby resolved that the city council approves the VCA alloy LLC project as a certified project within the Village and Hospital Hill Economic Opportunity Area, and grants a 5 percent tax increment financing exemption on the new growth for a period of five years, beginning in FY 2010, and authorizes the mayor to execute and implement a TIF agreement. Your second? I saw the owners of VCA today. They're very excited about their project and their building, and their work continues to come in, and they thank the council for the consideration of this project. Are we ready to vote on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? We did the two appointments of the firefighters early tonight, but we have one more appointment. This is Alon B. Tierney from Francis Street to the Central Business Architecture District. This is to fulfill the term of Peter Fraleyham, and the seat that was to be filled by an architect. This seat requires us to reach out to the local architect, AIA, American Institute of Architects. They made a referral, and I've talked to Alon. She's happy to serve in this capacity. Has a very interesting background. So I'm gonna ask for a referral to appointments and evaluation. Is there a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, now we have a, we did the poll petition. We have the, we had the... This is the CPA for the Historic Renovation of the First Church Meeting House in second reading. This is to clarify around the historic preservation language. If you'd like, do you want me to read the whole petition, or you want to go ahead with the vote on this? I need a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, you didn't want to, did you want to recuse yourself on that, Mr. Murphy?
I did.
I knew you did. The next is the, this is voted on every year. Right, the two of them, we can take them together. This is, upon the recommendation of the chief of police, order that pursuant to authority granted by general laws, Chapter 140, Section 167, all dogs in the city of Northampton shall be restrained from running at large during the period from January 1, 2009, through and including December 31, 2009. The owner or keeper of such a dog may use such a dog for sporting purposes, job dog, during the hunting season provided by the fish and game laws of the Commonwealth. Do you want to retake the second one as well?
Yes.
And that's the warrant to be issued by the city council of the police department under general law 140, Section 167, to catch and confine or kill all dogs within the city of Northampton that are running at large, as provided in 167, and said Chapter 140 during the period from January 1, 2009, through and including December 31, 2009. So they're removing them both together. I heard Counselor Marion LaBarge, and Counselor Bardslay is the second. Any discussion? This is a routine matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? I know that Counselor Carney doesn't really like voting on this, but...
Well, I don't either, but every two years, what is it, every two years we go through this?
Every year.
It's the killing you are bothering me.
The next are the five capital improvement orders. Do you want to take these as a group or individually?
As a group.
Okay, so this is the appropriation of $1,000 to fund Smith locational agricultural schools, fifth-year capital technology plan, the appropriation of $42,000 to fund repairs in Bridge Street School, $60,000 to fund a roof replacement at Leeds School, $185,000 to fund equipment and vehicle replacements, $32,000 from the Parking Meter Reserve Fund to the General Fund Capital Plan, and $25,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to the General Fund Capital Plan.
Will you approve it?
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Thank you for your support on this, in this tight year, and we will be bringing a few more forward as we are ready to do that. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, next is in second reading. Alright, well... This is amending Section 221B, the overview of city council and city council committees.
I think we have two transfers. We didn't get two. You did the capital plan works?
Right.
Parking meters.
I did that first.
Did that, okay. My apologies.
Did them all. The next is the amending 221B, the overview of city council and city council committees, the establishment of the committees as amended from your meeting, as your last meeting. Motion made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Kind of a hush? Okay.
Call the question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Aye.
Do you want me to enter this into the record?
Absolutely.
Okay. Counselor Murphy submitted this to me before the meeting tonight, and I'll just read it into the record. "In the interest of truth, justice, and the American way, I resign my membership on the Central Business Architecture Committee." Thank you for your service. Okay. Next is to amend Sections 272, three fines for littering. This is to be referred to the BPW, Conference Committee, Public Safety, and the Committee on Election Rules, Ordinances, Orders, and Orders. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? I have a bit of new business that I'd like to take care of, and then I do have, we do have an executive session scheduled. As you know, there has been a group working to create a Downtime Business Improvement District in the city, and they are just about ready to come forward and ask the council to start considering that question. In order to do that, under the BIM law, they have to give public notice of a public hearing 30 days ahead of time. They'd like to be on your second January council meeting agenda for a public hearing, which is the place where it would need to be. In order, if we brought this question for the, they have not filed their signatures yet. If we brought this at your December 18, I think it's the, is it December 18 meeting? No, you have a meeting on December 18. Right, and that would not be 30 days before the meeting in January, and you have to have a 30-day notice. So the only way you can set this hearing for your January meeting is to have the vote to set the hearing tonight. And you have to set the hearing. So I'm asking for a motion to set a public hearing, and you decide the time.
Set a public hearing at 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock? Okay, so there's been a motion made to set a public hearing at 8 o'clock on the Business Improvement District petition made by Counselor Dostal, seconded by Counselor Marion LaBarge. We will have further information for you, obviously, well before then, but I think just getting this much advanced notice is probably in the spirit of the best practices discussion that we had earlier in the evening. Okay? So the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Is there any further new business? Don't forget to come, walk on the hot chocolate walk.
Just a thank you to the mayor for coming to the Florence Holiday Pray, and a thank you to the volunteers from Florence Siphon Business that decorated Florence and put up the lights. Everyone from bank presidents to florists and postmen and all kinds of folks have volunteered up there to decorate Florence for the holiday season, but I think it looks very nice, so I want to thank them.
I think I got hit on the head by some candy that was thrown from some hangman.
No one wanted to talk to us. They wanted to see Santa.
We mentioned this on the youth commission last night, though. It might be good to officially, and I'm not sure if tonight or our next meeting, how we do this officially, to officially send the solicitation ordinance to the youth commission for their opinion on it as well. So we'd like to have that ordinance. I don't know if we can do it tonight, whether it needs to go in the next meeting to officially send.
I think you can do it tonight.
To add that committee to the list of committees.
I think a motion that we forward to the youth commission for their comments. We need to suspend the rules because it wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't on the new business.
It's a little murky with me about new business, but yeah, we can do that if you want. I mean, we didn't do it just for setting the hearing, so it... I think in the best practices, it also says clarify rules, and that would be one of the things we want to do. But I'm happy to suspend rules if you want, or we can treat it as we typically treat new business items, which is we don't suspend.
New business, yeah.
Right, so I heard a motion to move it, and is there a second? A second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? And as you go forward and thinking about your rules, you may want to clarify the new business portion, because we've done a number of things under new business before, so, okay? Is there anything else under new business?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank everybody here in the city of Northampton and outskirts of towns for the benefit of their...
Pardon.
It was extremely successful. Right now, we have $13,507.
That's great.
Which we have, and money still is coming in. So I want to thank everybody for coming and making this benefit a great success.
And thanks to the Elks for doing it.
Definitely.
You were non-stop moving, and that was moving plates and everything else, and council, everybody that worked on it. Quite good. Anything else? Alright, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation, collective bargaining, and real estate.
So move.
Second it.
Okay, now we need a roll call vote, and then, let's do the roll call vote.
Counselor Carney? Counselor Dostal?
Yeah.
Counselor Marion LaBarge? Counselor Raymond LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Rattler? Counselor Specter? Counselor Bart?
I meant to say that, and I think this, we are a journey from executive session, and there will be no votes taken. Alright, I'm gonna ask the TV cameras to...